So I'd like to call the meeting to an end. Let's start with the public hearing for relief from hardship as a result of the moratorium passed on July 8th. Anyone here to make public comment regarding that issue?
I want to make the clarification.
Oh, great. Rebecca's going to make a clarification about a point that was made last week, or two weeks ago.
Yes. Basically, I know in, at least in New Paltz Times and I believe in the Times Herald record, it was reported that the village chose to not renew the lease for the park and ride. The village actually does not pay for the park and ride lease. It is actually state funds that are channeled through the county. The county is actually the body that makes the decision as to where the park and ride will be, et cetera, et cetera. The village simply collects the funds from the state and it's all earmarked toward transportation, through Department of Transportation, and we then pay the landowner for the lease for that property. And when I first came back on board, I'm one of the signatures on the stack of bills that you can see here, and I did bring that up with our clerk's office. At the time, because of the amount, and I was unaware of the exact details of the lease, our treasurer filled me in and did confirm that it wasn't village tax care money that was going toward that expense, that it actually was through the Department of Transportation. And the Department of Transportation notified the village that by the end of this year they will cease to provide those funds for that particular park and ride.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we close this public hearing.
I wanted to make a question about the lease what we're going to be doing. In my heart, I didn't say the funding would drive out, the lease was terminated by the end of the year. I think it was directly with the board's agreement.
Right, but the village did not make the determination to end the lease. It was a county decision.
The point is, I didn't terminate the lease. Village terminated the lease because the funding dried up, which, and then the mortgage are in place, which was me.
Okay, that's incorrect. The village did not end the lease. The county ended the lease.
The county did not. I did not leave with the county.
Oh. Okay, so I have a motion. I have a motion on the table to close the public hearing.
You know, you should have been there. I got a problem with that. I said, you know, this is two public hearings. The first one I let it slide. I'm not going to let it slide this time. I had something said, and what I'm saying is, the lease was with me and the village of New Paltz. The county had nothing to do with it. The state of New York funded it, the OT. I did not get a letter from the OT saying to terminate the lease. The lease is getting terminated between me and the village of New Paltz. That should be clear. And the village of New Paltz could have more authority. That should be clear.
So before we close the public hearing, could we just make clear for the board and for the public what happens next to this process after the public hearing is closed?
Sure, we'll make a determination about how we want to respond to the hardship. We don't have to do that this evening.
So people should know?
So I have a motion on the table to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, let's save it. Regular business meeting.
... which is standards, regulation, and the village should figure it justice formal.
So a couple of items that I wanted to add to the agenda to approve this agenda. I wanted to add discussion about adding the water project Q and A that the town board adopted and put on their website. Second additional item, having the village participate in the career fair or the volunteer fair that's took place at SUNY on September 11th, from 1 to 4. And another item, I wanted to comment on a fee that is in our fee schedule related to section 129 of our housing standards. That was all that I had. Katie, was there anything else that we wanted to?
Thank you, Susan. And that David Gilmore would like the board to consider pulling 10 and 11 from the agenda.
Two things also. Pulling 10 and 11?
Yes.
Well, number 10 is the, well, I would actually like to Google over those publicly and explain why we're, what we're doing with each of those items.
Absolutely.
So number 10 is the proposed NBR district. The district formerly known as B3, that's number 10, correct?
Yes.
And then?
Number 10 is the 212-23 cycling review allocation procedures as referred by the planning board in the 7/21/15 meeting.
Great, okay.
And number 11 would be the discussion on the planning board, 8/18 review of the NBR zoning tax.
I would like to keep the NBR on the agenda and then remove the discussion of 212-23. The only other thing that I wanted to do was for Deputy Mayor Rosler, because she will need to be excused this evening, we're just going to change the order of the agenda. So the presentation by the Lalo group, I wanted that to be first. And then I wanted to remove, since Rebecca will most likely be leaving, I wanted to remove from the agenda
13.
The discussion of proposed parking and zoning changes. But I wanted to keep on the agenda the discussion of parking at Elting and Hasbrook. Because those were two separate items, correct?
Sam, I will note that in your email asking for the thank you to interviewers who maybe also want to discuss all the places that the EPC, that was your email, whether you still want to have that discussion entirely.
Yeah, let's add EPC secretary to the agenda. And I also wanted to add to the agenda that the village will be looking to hire a new planning and zoning secretary. And Donna, you said you had a couple items.
Yeah, we received some information from the town building committee. I just want to share a little bit of that with the rest of the board. And with regard to the public hearing we just had, I'd like to set a date. I would like to address that at the end of tonight's meeting in executive session, but if Deputy Mayor will be there, that's probably not proper. I'd like to address that in a timely way, so that we can set a date and move quickly on having that conversation among us. Do you want to do that? I guess I can make a motion to that effect, but just throwing it out there, like to, this issue's been twisted out of the wind for a while, I'd like to resolve it one way or the other.
The hardship issue. So you want to plan on discussing that or making a final determination on the high note?
As soon as possible.
Great, that's our next meeting.
I have one thing. 16, the discussion of village code during March trust. We are waiting for David to weigh in on which additional streets to include, so I don't think we're ready to set that again.
Okay, so we'll pull that from the agenda. Now I have no idea the order of this agenda.
Katie will straighten it out. Talk to you later.
So are we good with the agenda? additions and subtractions?
Yes. And back to what Donna's proposing, being that it would be an executive session item if there was a need felt for a special meeting, I would be open to that.
Okay. Regarding that, their request for hardship?
Yes. Just to give us additional time to make a better informed decision.
So we could, so we could potentially do that before the night?
Yes.
And then we could, you know, that's fine.
Sam, my respectfully request of a ability to make a comment and announcement at the appropriate time.
So that's something you're adding to the agenda?
It doesn't have to be added to the agenda if I can even just begin a public comment. It's just regarding schedule that I want to.
Okay. So we are okay with this agenda?
Yes.
And Katie's going to help with the order?
Yes.
Is there any to turn up the microphone? It's really quite clear. It's very bothering.
Turn this white noise machine off.
So could I make it right that you're going to vote on the moratorium on the 9th?
No. The hardship.
The hardship on the 9th?
At the latest, we might, as Rebecca suggested, we might have a special meeting to, because the discussion can also occur in executive session.
Oh, the vote doesn't pass. I thought the vote had to happen during?
It will happen publicly, but we might have a special meeting to discuss.
Okay, so the latest you can go on it would be September 9th?
Yes.
I think there is a 15 day time limit in the moratorium. The 9th is 14 days, but it doesn't leave any room for error there.
Well, we're talking about, we want to try and have a special meeting. We want a meeting next Wednesday?
That would be fine with me.
That's fine with me.
Make a motion, we have a special meeting to address the hardship, the hardship issue a week from tonight, beginning at 7:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept this agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the Board of Trustees has changed their normal schedule for the month of September, and that the Board of Trustees will meet on Wednesday, September 9th, and then again on Wednesday, September 16th, which is a change from what you would have expected would have been the 9th and the 23rd, but in observation of young core, we will not be holding a meeting.
7 o'clock or 7:30?
7:30 is our regularly scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting time.
Thank you.
And it will be published in the newspaper.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Hi.
Just state your name.
Okay, Donna Leeden, Land Grove. I'm here regarding the water issue. I'm trying to look for proposed water district number five. I would just like to comment that, I know there was a local official, I don't know who it was, I'm sorry about that, who stated sometime recently that there were a few families on Plains Road who were opposed to the proposed water district, and I'd just like to point out that on Plains Road, if you drive down, there are over 25 signs expressing people's feelings opposing the water district. Just to get a little bit of a reality check on that. I just, that is, that's all. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Miss Conny Mott from my own category. I'm here to follow up on my, on my side of the speech for you to go ahead. I've got an application that occurred just two days ago. I'm understanding it's the same person. It turns out that she doesn't come in a dangerous location. She also systematically detects systems to defecate on somebody else's property. And she does this on a basis. The document was not verified, and she's going to talk to the owner to make sure that it's easy to get it out of her. It's a public health issue, I think. But then I was moving to the house, there is a curious data, you know, complaining about it. I've been talking to the owner of the building, it's a lot of crap, and he has seen himself acting in this manner, and he's definitely told me that he's not telling the truth, obviously. I have photographic evidence, if necessary, so, and I just, I'm going to refer, on top of the document, I'm talking to this man, his name is, I have some, it would be, I think to the village's interest, if the board, if the board enforcement, if the city wants to take action.
Thanks.
I have just one thing, many of the residents feel unsafe with this man on the street. I've been just talking to one person, she's a proud woman herself, I don't know if I've seen another small school almost there, by this person as well, which is much.
Okay. Can I make any comments? Yes.
Just like to assure you that we've begun to look into this, and there have been some communications from the building department about who is authorized to take it in such a case, and we'll look into it further.
Any other public comments? John?
I'm John Star, I'm on Grove Street. I'm the chair of the Village of New Paltz Environmental Policy Commission. I'm here unofficially just to make some comments about some things that are before the board today. The first one I wanted to make was about volunteerism, and we could have a role that volunteerism plays in our community. I want to show you guys a document that was created by a volunteer on the EPC. It's a list of recycling areas that are in very close proximity to the village of New Paltz. This document is created by a researcher from the Environmental Policy Commission, and that person is a volunteer. It's full of helpful information about where to recycle different things. I just showed this to you as an example of the kind of work that volunteers in this community do, and I'm humbly urging that we have someone present at the volunteer fair coming up in September, and hoping that you can facilitate that in some way. Sort of tying into that point, documents such as this, we hope to have housed the EPC webpage on the Village of New Paltz, webpage on our commission spot. But it's important, I think, that our websites and the hours and the agendas are all carefully housed and open to the public, and beyond that, that videotaped evidence of our meetings continues to happen. It came to our attention that we would no longer have a videographer, that there would be videotaping by some kind of mechanized videotaping machine, but that we would not actually have a physical human being that would do that work. The work that's done by our videographer goes beyond simply recording meetings. That person also has to choreograph various other duties, such as getting those things to people to time up for meeting minutes and so forth. I know a lot of people, and many of them are in the room, fought to have open government in this town, and it's a principle that I think we all hold pretty dearly, so I'm hoping that we can continue to have somebody working in that capacity, and I think that's something to discuss. The last thing that I wanted to mention was, there'll be a presentation about a project that's coming up, that's being proposed, and I would humbly request that, you know, I know you guys have to wear a lot of hats, but certainly the environmental hat is one of the many things that you guys are tasked with considering. We worked hard, many people worked hard, I was aware that many people did, work hard on daylighting the stream here in the park, and that stream, to my understanding, runs through the property that's being discussed today for the hotel development. So of the many considerations that I'm sure you'll carefully think about, I would just hope that environmental issues are among the things that you keep in mind.
Anybody else before we close? Andrew?
Andrea Russo, Henry Court. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I came tonight because I wanted to hear the discussion about the new proposed way of going to videotape meetings, and to see what it is we have planned, but I, as many of you know, I served as co-chair, and I co-chaired the public access committee for many years, which was a joint committee of the town and the village, and that committee is inactive at this point, which I'm hoping in the future will change, and I just wanted to offer, if this is, I wanted to offer my knowledge of the history of the struggle we had to kind of get things to where they are today, and, you know, I'm certainly available for consultation if it would be helpful at any time in the future, just, you know, make sure that we keep the quality of public access television and everything that goes along with it, you know, uploading to the internet and keeping the schedule on, you know, the Facebook and all that.
Anybody else? I think Jeff, you?
I'm Jeff Long, in Town of New Paltz. Jeff's supervisor, and I just wanted to thank you for adding to water. I thought it was going to be I. Dan Mashard here with me, so for the question and answer, and we've got a large group out there, so obviously you want to get them going, but if you want to do the question and answer, Dan and I will stay available to any questions on the Q and A on the proposal of Water District 5 and also on 3. And I believe you might only have one more meeting, actually maybe now two, if you have a special meeting, but also on Thursday, September 10th, at the community center, we are scheduled, a meeting at 7:30 PM, discussion of the water districts. I know Tom is there for the presentation and also for, so I just make sure everyone's officially invited. It will not be a town board meeting, it will be a joint meeting, it's a information meeting for the residents, a proposed five, which there's about eighty residents there, and also the expansion of three, and to get water resources to all your residents, the 7,000 plus users here and the 450 some users we have in town water districts.
I can respond to that in that. I shared that September 10th date with our board to see who's available. I plan to be there. I also had asked your board if we could do a joint meeting, even like a short, special joint meeting, to discuss the municipal center, so we can discuss that later.
Absolutely.
But I thought, you know, if we were all in the same nearby vicinity, that might be a great opportunity to have that conversation as a joint meeting as well.
Absolutely, yes. I thought we were, I know we couldn't get people tonight, I know tomorrow, next week your board couldn't make it, so we will get it, let's get it sooner than later. But if you guys want to move it up, I mean, should Dan and I stay then, and maybe after this, did you guys want to move up the Q and A on water or?
I'm okay with that if we do Lalo for
Yeah, you have a huge group out there.
We have a huge group, and we have a deputy mayor who needs to take off shortly, so if we move Lalo first, and then the water Q and A afterwards. Donna, you had another?
I have a question about the September test meeting, which I had already been aware of for this town board meeting. Is that going to be a presentation, or is there going to be opportunity for questions probably going?
Yes. Yes, of all. Yes, yes, of all.
So would be able to?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. And in attendance at it too, we're going to be having, we'll have the town board there, Russell Erdeni, who's a hydrologist there, we'll have DEP representatives there, we'll have Dave Plaza there, we'll have Joe Morielen there, we'll have Dave Mercy there. So we'll have attorneys, engineers, and hydrologists all there, whatever you ask.
Jeff? I'm sorry, because the board, because this board is considering going for purposes of record keeping, will it be videotaped?
Absolutely.
Great, good to know.
Any other public comments before we close it up? Nope. Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First discussion topic, the Lalo folks, maybe they can be alerted that we're ready for them? It's not really, it's just a white noise machine. It doesn't actually cool anything.
It's not cool.
It does. It hasn't worked.
I don't want them to situate themselves.
Yeah, just going to act, I don't know what it's about. If you want to see that as a question, you want to. That's fine.
Yeah, that's actually best with the cameras, but, yeah.
Can you even pull it on the stands? Is it going to help? Just so it's extra clear? A few cards here.
Thank you so very much.
You have no slack, Donna?
Yep. My name is John Capello, an attorney with Jacobus and Coopas, and I'm here on behalf of Luis Martinez and his label group. Luis is a longtime village resident, went to high school here in New Paltz. That's his business office here in the village, and we're here to present what we believe is a very exciting opportunity to do a really state-of-the-art development in your core business. So you can see a lot of maps here, you got your property, but I think most of the property is, and it's right there. So it's not unusual that I just look out the window and see the process of that. This is a 2.4 acre parcel adjacent to the village hall here that has been state haven't developed for as long as I can remember. I was here personally about 10 years ago representing a group that was going to do a workforce housing project there. This is a very different project. We're here as the first step, and it could potentially be a long journey. If this board is interested in pursuing it, we will need some zoning relief or amendments and considerations from the village board, and that's a discretionary action. So really what we're here today is to present the project to you. I have Justin Pace, Justin's another New Paltz High School graduate here, he's with Mesa Consulting, who are the engineering firm, representing the applicant. And I also have Jason Anderson, from Fox Anderson, the architects, proposed architects for the project, and they will present the site plan and the building elevations to you with the proposal, and then we'll let Mr. Martinez speak to your board and discuss the vision. Once you see what the vision is, then I'll sum up with a discussion of how we could work together to potentially achieve that vision if you think it's worthy of continuing to pursue it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin to present the site.
Thanks, Tom. I mean, Justin needs, he's a consultant landscape architect firm. I'll do just kind of take you through the existing site owners and then also the overview of the proposed project, and then pass it off to Jason through the architecture. As John mentioned, we have here an area of the project site is, formerly known as the pit by most of the buildings here, north, we're on Hasbrook Ave, oh, sorry, Paco Ave, south, we're on Hasbrook Ave, and then we have, Elting Avenue, on the western side of the project site. So bordered by those three roads, along with village facilities to the east, and also municipal parking butts against the northern of the study. It is about 2.4 acres in size, currently vacant as most know. There's access to village utilities, water, sewer drainage, that type of infrastructure adjacent to the site, and it is the most. Just from a topography standpoint, it's quite a big, great change from the existing site. It's about 32 feet going from east down to west. Hence the hit location. And you'll see how the design of the project kind of plays into that existing topography. Looking now is just bring up the site plan, which I believe all partners have in their packets. Just to orient everyone now, north is going to be to your right. So Platte Hill is on the side of the village facility down at the bottom. And then Hasbrook Ave is down here. So what we're looking at is the property is something like U shape. The building facility itself occupies a good portion of the project site owner's space areas. What it starts out with is a two-story parking garage. And there's about 400 spaces total in that. We have discussed the potential of providing some of those spaces as public parking. So as you can see, this is the municipal lot here. We would have an access point into the garage at that location. There is a through road from Platte Hill down to Hasbrook for access to the main entry to the facility. And then there are also two other access points along Hasbrook. One for service and then also another entrance address for the parking garage. So coming out of the parking garage, we have two buildings. One on the north and one on the south side of the project. In northern, it is a condominium building. We have 81 units in that condominium building. It's about eight stories tall. And in between the two, we have each room area, entry foyer, go down to the proposed hotel. The hotel is 96 rooms. First floor, we incorporate a conference or banquet area. And then the rooftop has a restaurant and spa. So the hotel moves itself over between those floors. And that is six stories tall. Something that are many that we've included is the project here. What we have is a public promenade from Hasbrook up to Mistletoe Garden. We have this meandering walkway that goes through the site. So we're trying to promote, you know, pedestrian connectivity into the village. There's a lot of exciting pedestrian projects going on right now that this could be looking to. We have connections to them through town, to the rail trail, the river to reach projects is going on. So there's a lot of exciting things going on that, you know, to add into that pedestrian connectivity into the village. Also have a reflecting pool for aesthetics. Also looking to do gardens. So these areas here, you don't see any surface parking projects because so the garage, we're also looking to do intensive green groups, obvious. That would be the garage, both projects. Mostly we have a couple on top of the roof for the condominium. So you can see we're part of those type of things. From a stormwater standpoint, we're looking to choose those or stormwater gardens, intended by arbitration and things like that to help offset the urban sustainability of the project.
Can we ask you a couple of questions? Or you want to, is that okay? Or you want to stop?
No, yeah.
So John had brought up the question about daylighting or keeping streams open to the sky. The past administration worked hard to daylight the stream here in Peace Park. So that stream, for all intents and purposes, is open to the sky in the pit. So is there an opportunity to keep it open to the sky with this type of project?
It's still there. You talked about it coming down.
Right. It's parallel to Hasbrook.
Yeah. Yeah. That's something that we could look into. Right now, we haven't gotten to developing the full drainage grid and things like that. We do have quite a dimension, quite a topography to deal with. And that drainage dish does come down.
So that's a possibility. That could, that could potentially be a landscaped feature.
We could look into that.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I'll just, it seems like such a tall building. Is there a way you could block the winds very early on in the process? See where the viewscape is at? That's an issue that comes up a lot, a little too late in the process. If you could bring it up as early as possible.
We understand the, you know, already they had the discussion. This is our initial presentation of the vision here. Jason, the architect, we had been looking at that. Certainly the board wants to consider it forward with this project as something they think generally could be beneficial. And we would have to prepare all the stuff in the end at the beginning. Because we'd have to go full, you know, environmental review and full site plan review to look at drainage issues. And we're certain, given the height and given the request of the dump change, you know, visual analysis would be prepared to, you know, look at this, look at your.
Right. I would raise, and I probably should have explained what we're doing here process-wise. So this is a general introduction to this concept before power board. But we're also encouraging this potential applicant to make sure that they're dealing with our planning board and building department and submitting a pre-application to our building department. So that's, that should really be done in parallel with this. But this is really just an introduction to the concept. That's what we're trying to do here. But I absolutely encourage any sort of concerns or questions that you might have to share them with this developer, share them with our building department. So, you know, we can get ahead of some of those potentially troubling issues. So but I, so I encourage you guys to continue with your presentation so we can move on with our evening.
It's a couple of points that I was trying to make in here. We touched on how I think this development is possibly our proposal here. It's something we have a common estimate, goals. Looking, looking for a broad range of housing options, you know, condominium style downtown area, remote tourism development. We have downtown town, a feature of the region. We see this as being quite the destination point. And feel that there's a, there's a need in the area for lodging. You know, with being close proximity, assuming some events that they take place. People traveling to Cape, Cape Town for lodging, those type of things. And feel that there's a need or a want for a hotel facility in New Paltz. And then also group opportunities. We have a banquet space and gardens, things like that. So to add into those, to come to conferences, you see, those, those levels. And then also, the project itself is a prime example of if the project did not scroll, I think that's, it's been surveyed for quite some time. Mr. Martinez is going to speak a little more to that. But his vision, how it gets, gets these points and, you know, is popular essentially for this parcel of the downtown area. So I think with that, if I'm just to overview the project, I can turn it over to Mr. Anderson, who can talk about the architecture.
Hey, everybody, this is Jason Anderson, director of architect. Just think to maybe others, remember I've seen some of the elevations already. So I think we could just walk through the site with one other aspect, just to see how we started to develop the site and why we were, we actually we did the project and what it plays into the building. Just a couple of points that Justin hit on. One thing I think that's deter people from the site was the fact that the grade changes, so it's going to be very difficult to deal with. However, what happens when you're dealing with any sort of density is you, you need to take that into consideration and then come up with a way to try to use that to your advantage. And so that's what we're trying to do here. Because the issues that LALO and New Paltz make that issues of the parking, issues of traffic, and how do you do a development that has any sort of density where you can control that within your own building? And so that's the approach that we took here. So just to talk a little bit about these entry points. What we determined early on, and this was really Luis, was that everything that we did had to be contained on site. So if it was parking, if it was offloading of any vehicles or deliveries, had to be offsite, or onsite, not offsite. So that was critical. So what we did is we took advantage of the slope with these parking garages. We took care of all our parking plus extra. We ended up being able to fit two tractor trailers for any sort of deliveries here to the building for unloading load. And we accessed the, we created the lines in such a way that the parking yard accessed directly from existing grounds. So there's no other developer required at the different grades. And then put the building up at an elevation that worked, again, rated the existing grades on either end when we had that by. So that was the approach. And what we looked at was when it came to a purpose area, and you'll see quicker debris out here and shopping when you think of what Justin said about the amounts. So we've got 96 hotel rooms, which is our minimum to be able to do this project to be financially viable. We have, I think it's 81 residential units. And you see the amount of green space. And the way that we did that is we said, rather than trying to create more small, even on its own site, let's bring it to one area. Let's create the density in one area, be able to have rooftop gardens, be able to have reflective pools, have more patios, different space. Some of it public, some of it for the hotel. And then be able to do that all within the site. So Justin mentioned this promenade that comes here. So that, that's for the public to come off of that lot and be able to walk further. Now, if you think about it, the hotel and everything to the east, that's part of this property. And that's part of the development. These gardens, our anticipation at this point is to have one that's accessible for the public and one that's for the residents. So that basically, if you were to think of what we're doing, we're taking this property and we're really giving public access through it and usability of that property as well. We think that's going to solve a couple of problems. One, the copy direction through this parking lot that you see here for three minutes, to be able to create that access right to the downtown from the public. So that's really the approach that we took to get to this point. And that really developed it into something. So take a look at, scroll that up. So here's the first shot. And this is, if you're, if you're all hovering up, you are, we're at east, making it east at this point. And so behind the building would be this building that we're standing in now. So what you see in this elevation here, we've got the six stories of the hotel. And so what this is, the first story is a banquet hall, a cafe, lobby. We've got only four stories of the hotel itself. And then you've got the rooftop, restaurant, and spa. So that's what's, what's in the hotel itself. One of the interesting things about the hotel is it is, should I get the numbers right, 64 feet above grade. So to speak to your point about the height of the building. So at grade, which we could assume is just a little bit below this parking lot, 64 feet. So let's give that a little bit of perspective. Banister Hall, the gutter of that roof, not the, not the pool of the gutter where the wall meets the roof, is only six feet lower than that on grade. So to give you a little perspective, makes, and so even we're about five feet lower than that. So we're going to measure better. And that gives you what the site is. The way that we were able to get that many stories in that height was by dropping or by creating a more contemporary structure that has concrete plate floors. And that allows us to not have the depth that you'd have in a traditional building. And so we're able to drop 12 feet from what a typical building would be of this night or of this amount of stories. So that gives you an idea of what the hotel is. And we've got a lobby here. This is the same construction, but a complementary structure. This is our condominium units. What we did here is we dropped it one story. So when you think, we were talking about eight stories. One of those is the precedent there. So there's gardens down below, but essentially we don't have the second level of parking down there. Instead, we brought the building down to try to do, address height issues there. What you're looking at here, this is the two-story parking garage that you see. So the entire thing will be screened, be enclosed. These are the two gardens that we saw in the site plan that we had there. You see the reflecting pool a little bit there. You step off from the promenade into the courtyard, which is part of the hotel. Let's take a look just at. So before we were looking as if you're in the air. There's no reason we're going to see that. It's of that elevation that you're standing on one of the houses. This is high up. So right now, if you were, we took this, this quarter, came out, and this is the final that we're looking at. So here we've got the underlying wave of the concrete that is the hotel. And then in the background, we have the condominium unit. That's essentially the architectural components of it. The materials that are being used here are glass, concrete, stone, and wood. That's basically, that's what you see as the exterior of the building. The purpose of it was to use materials that are sustainable, that don't have a large carbon footprint, that are sourced locally. Those are the points that we tried to hit in this with that water. We have to deal with the rain gardens that we have, capturing root water, root drainage. Those are all components that Luis is committed to and what we discuss, including solar panels and such, probably to get to that point. Do you have any questions?
Hi, Luis Martinez, from the label group, local developer and construction management. I have experience in New Paltz and I've worked on a lot of projects. I'm presenting this project to the village in Newport because I, I think it's a really neat for the village to have a hotel downtown because it's for Newport. And now with that, to get a better use of it. I see the pit for so many years, bacon. I think it's about, even if I do what somebody is going to come and do, if I'm not going to do it in town or out of town, but why not be presented to the, to the village and see what it will come out to? We want to be, if this goes forward, we're going to be getting over 300 temporary jobs and 100-plus permanent jobs. So, and what else can I say? I mean, I hope we go forward and, and want to this project. I don't know how much to say. There's nothing left to say. So any questions?
Well, I would just take and wrap it up and then open up for questions to really, to, you know, why, why we're here tonight. As we discussed, to accomplish this vision, the process would be, with the best process, there may be other ways to accomplish this is for the village to consider as that changes. Property is located in the B2 zoning district. But if you locate through zoning as it relates to any commercial use of this property, really all there could be, develop will be a small, another. would be a small, another strip mall comparable to the strip malls you have, you know, intersection that you do in two oh nine, two oh, two ninety-nine, et cetera. So this is something we believe is different, and actually it's closer to what your comprehensive plan looks at to do in the core downtown business, but it would take your board doing a zone change. So as an attorney, I can work for boards quite a bit, and also represent that for us. Sometimes I look at the code and say to my client, code says you can do this, you're entitled to do this. All right, right, you go through the environmental review, the board has to approve it if we mitigate it. Here you don't. I mean, this requires you to do, consider a zone change, which is at your discretion, which is, while we're here tonight, we understand that to accomplish this project and to accomplish a zone change, we need to do a lot more work, we need to do a lot of engineering work, we need to do the architectural study, we need to do the visual analysis to show we can mitigate the damages. But if this board says and looks at this project and says, this is not our vision, this is not something we want to see in Newport, then I don't believe this man just wants to spend the money going forward. If you think that this is something that could be a possibility, it could be something that you can embrace, then we go to the planning board, we formally petition you, I gave you a draft of what we believe is a local law to amend, because I have created you a special permit use for mixed-use development in the B2 zoning district. You would review that, obviously, the planner, your attorney would assist you, would begin the environmental review process and environmental, you know, studying the impacts of the project. Your planning board would have to eventually give a zone change, grant site plan approval and special exception use for this project. So they would review it, they could be the lead agency, you know, under secret, you could be the lead agency under secret. There's a lot of work to do, but this is the first step, and the first step is, guys, we just don't, we don't see your vision, then please let us know. If it's something that you agree with us, that could be a real attraction, something unique, Newport has a lot of diverse elements to it, I think this is something that is not there, you know, you don't want anything to be the same all over, but this is something that we believe can be a unique development in one of the few open spaces that you really have in your core that can not only provide the tax rateables and the jobs we discussed, but also can bring more people and a different type of people to Newport, potentially bring conventions or meetings to Newport for people who not only have the spa service or maybe a back restaurant, but will also walk around your town, go, you know, visit Minnewaska, visit Mohom, spend money in your restaurant, and spend money in your, you know, businesses, and really help enhance it, and will also provide an identity, you know, for the village as a cut through, as an attractive place to walk through, help potentially mitigate your traffic. So that's where we are, so with that, I'll give the meeting back to you if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, or do I, from the board?
I'm just curious as to any, for lack of a better word, studies that you've done regarding the traffic in the area. I'm sure you're aware that it's a large church.
Right.
Basically across the street, there's the park, and both are fairly high usage in terms of traffic as well as, you know, just the number of people who rotate out throughout the week. And I'm just wondering how the traffic generated from your building would affect the traffic that already exists.
Well, I think the initial answer to this place will be a destination, so people will probably come and park their cars and then maybe go up to, you know, Minnewaska, but we understand that we'll have to do a full traffic analysis, and Major has tried, you know, they're a full service consulting firm, so we would prepare a full traffic study. If there are some improvements that, you know, need to be made, that can be made, we would certainly, you know, incorporate, we think this would, you know, help with the parking situation, but that's certainly visual analysis, traffic, stormwater. We understand we have to do, you know, all of that and provide you the answers, so I'm going to say here, no problem at all, but.
Yeah, and would that also rescue services and, you know, emergency services?
Yeah, I was going to make sure they can access it, you know, but all of that will be part of our studies. I mean, if we do go forward and petition you, we would provide you right at the onset with a list of the studies that we think are necessary, you would review it and tell us. We agree those are all necessary, plus the history of, you know, so that we understand that's certain.
Anybody else, Mr. from the board?
Well, I'm going to say that we all know that you know that this is not a one-step process, that this is, this is going to go forward, it's going to go through a number of iterations and interchange between your team and our board, if it's going to go along. I, for one, would like to say that I would much prefer to see something special and interesting and new and residential that brings jobs, rather than to see the pit stay the way it is now. I welcome notions of development that would enhance the center of Newport.
Don, want to ask anything?
Well, I don't necessarily want to ask anything. I think you were looking for some general indications of people's first impressions. So I should probably first disclose whatever bias I have, not without any view or this particular project. But I had a conversation with my wife many times as we were coming from Minnewaska toward the village, and we look at the HAV, which sticks up over the tree line, and say, how did that ugly thing ever ruin our skyline? And the answer is, well, because they didn't have to follow village building codes. And I just don't know that this is the sort of thing that has been envisioned for the downtown village. I still, and we can talk about this in our joint meeting with the town, I still envision that to be, as was recommended in two thousand and seven, the ideal place for a municipal. So I had my, I had my eyes on that space for something else. So I had that bias. When I looked at it, I was taken aback, that may just be me. When I have mentioned this concept, we had a lot of detail to just two or three people in town, I didn't get a lot of enthusiasm, but they haven't seen your information, so I'm trying to be, my first inclination when I saw this was this would probably not fly in the village of Newport, so it was just my personal assessment. I haven't discussed that with, you know, anyone, but that was my first impression when I saw it, so just leave it at that.
Thanks.
Well, first off, thank you for being interested in developing and bringing money to the village. But like Don, I do wonder if this really fits the character, especially when we're talking about how tall these buildings are. You refer to the, one half of the building being within six feet, I think, to the DLC. The other half of the building is taller than that, isn't it? The highest point of the building is how much taller than the DLC?
The highest point of the building, the highest point of the building.
The whole pressure.
Of the entire project.
Right.
Is shorter than the, you know, the Gable End of that hall, the Vanderbroeck Hall, the Gable End, which has two towers, it's, it's a brick, it's shorter than that.
It's also.
From, from grade, it's five feet above, the grade, the grade there is five feet above coming.
I have a question about a topic that was just completely absent from your presentation because we have an affordable housing law. So whether it's a rental property or a condominium, when you're building greater than ten units, you have to have ten percent of the units be offered as affordable housing. Has that been included in any of your initial concepts?
The, these units, I think we have to look at and discuss them, and these units are intended to be competing with the hotel in, you know, for rent. I haven't talked to my client, and that's something the board would want, ten percent of the units, we'll see if we could.
It's a law, it's not, it's not something that.
Oh, we're asking you to change, you know, we're looking at, you know, changing some of the laws and, you know, and, you know, for the people laughing, I stood here with a full affordable housing project, and that was a big character of the, of the village. So, you know, really if you look at your zoning code, it's a big character of what you're conceiving there is either that pit or a strip mall, you know, and so you can talk about war, use tax payable, you know, this.
No, I, again, so, but I, but it seems like what you're, you're asking us to consider reevaluating one law, but we would also want to respect our existing housing law.
Sure.
I think that would be difficult to.
You know, consider such, such a, some of the units.
Okay. Do we want to, as a board, comment a little bit more about whether this is a possibility in terms of the, you know, the idea of a project like this who's seeking a special use permit? Is that a possibility?
I would suggest, though, that this, that we have now enacted a two-meeting rule, and this is the first blush that we have at this, and I think we need that further consideration of this before we do any action of any sort.
I think that's a, that's a, this is a great use of the two-meeting rule. Sleep on it.
Yeah, I'm not asking, we're not asking for, tonight, we would just, you know, it's already in the process, like the indication, because we are asking you to do, you know, something that the board wants us to go and discuss this, you have to do a similar presentation to the planning board and look for their input to guide you, certainly.
Are you, are you waiting for an indication from us before you pursue a pre-act with the planning board?
Oh, we could go pre-act with the planning board, no, I mean, that's what you.
I think it would be useful for you to pursue, you know, our conversation as well as the pre-act route with the planning board in parallel.
Okay, that's certainly suitable.
Does anyone agree or disagree with that suggestion?
I agree.
And also, I just wanted, going back to, I'm blanking on the name of the project at the time, but the, the name, yes, for of course, affordable housing project. At the time, it wasn't that the village board was opposed by any means to the project. There were technical issues, you know, related to Albany where there were, there were certain laws and provisions that the board would have had to almost prematurely act upon in order to get the funding that would be available from the state. And I'm sure you recall that that was what halted the project.
Yeah, I'm just, but even that one required, and we were, is that required to consider that, that would require some change as, as well? So it was under your existing zoning, there's probably not much you can do with that, which is why it's, you know, they're vacant so long. It's just one way or another, if you want to see something in there.
It requires a level of action.
You have to locate yourself.
We get that. I'm ready to, I'll go, you have one more on?
Another question, I think that has to do with, I'm going to ask it anyway. There's a part of our community that we're looking to develop, it's not necessarily the pit, it's, it's the North Chestnut Zone. Is this project designed site-specific? Is it possible to remove this some of the location in the village? I think I got the answers.
That's your question, it's site-specific, you know, just because of impact you want to have congestion in the main street, the parking, it's a, it's impacted, it's going to have the core village, it's the largest part of the main street, and we need a lot of pressure where people congested, they don't want to parent, it's hectic, and to use the public transportation at the village, you know, and create a job surface, so minimizing that with cars that are on the street are obviously local accidents, and keep all cars underground, so to speak, and have a lot of pedestrian traffic, and you have public transportation. So this core area, because we go up here, you know how it gets, we perceive it and everything, it's crazy, we want to, we don't want to impact that any further, we want to take away that.
I have one question as a taxpayer, just wanted to find out if you were sticking a pilot for this building?
We haven't even got to that. It's a presidential, isn't it?
Well, can you say it here? You're not, sticking a pilot?
Well, I think there's will be one added for the hotel, which is a four-eighty-five feet, some of the other taxes, I'm not going to comment for the village, but taxes are good to make revenue for the village, so.
Well, I don't believe there's a pilot formula for a residential property, but I believe there is one for a hotel. So you're saying that's a possibility that you might.
I don't think that, that's not a likely a place of, you know.
From what we'll, what we'll do as part of, if we go forward, as part of the development we do is a fiscal analysis, and that will include, we frankly haven't got a full fiscal analysis, and that will include the tax revenues that will come to the town and an IDA, great, because there's different kind of IDA, there's just real estate taxes, sales taxes, and stuff that can help a project like this move forward, but that fiscal impact will identify what, if anything, we would go for, and we would be able to review it, and we would see what the advantage is or would be to the village.
I know the project includes several hundred parking spots for the hotels as well as the residential property, and you've kind of alluded to some parking that would be available to the public. Is that number of spots in play at all?
We still, on the process of design, how much parking would be assigned to the village? How much trouble would be needed for the project, you know, to make hope?
Do you have a range of what you might be considering as far as number of spots that would be available for the public?
Yeah, it's almost, it's almost, I would say, you know, between twenty to sixty.
What, I can't, sorry, let me say that here.
Thirty to sixty.
Thirty to sixty publicly available spots, okay. Anything else? We're good? Thanks, gentlemen.
This might be too early in the process to be able to ask this question, but where do you foresee giving the water to supply the residents and the coastal?
We have to, in the municipal water system, and that would be a study as well.
Thanks, guys. We'll be on call next. So we were going to discuss, I know the second item was whether the village board wanted to also include the Q and A document about the water project. So our attorneys and engineers have created this several-question document that the town has adopted and included on their website. I want to, I guess the question for us is, do we want to also include that just for the sake of offering information, including it on the village website?
I'd like to comment on that. I've asked our attorneys, both, whether we need to claim the document in some form or way, and they have said, no, we don't, that we can post this as a public service so that it doesn't have to become an official document of the village, but it is, it's an offering of the village of information for the public. And we can state that on the poster, or we can say on it, we offer this as a public service.
So I'd like to make that as a motion that we're offering this document as a public service. This is not an officially endorsed village document, it's a, a document that's for folks to read and to publicly answer questions.
Why would we want to have an official document? It's not that we don't, it's not that I want to, but if there were objections, because you might feel that you need to go through each item and endorse it, it needn't be that. You need love every word, it's, it's a public service.
So we have a motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
What was the motion, to post or not?
To post.
I'll go next.
Okay, so, four, yes, one, no. Next item, discussion of, no, we're going to move on to the discussion of videotaping of the village board meetings, right, and Don is going to share some thoughts and comments.
Yeah, just a little history, Andrea Russo mentioned during public comment that she and I were involved in establishing a program to film public meetings and essentially extend that service to our community, I think it's worked well, I think there's a lot of people who get their primary information on government operations from either watching the meetings on YouTube or Channel 23, and I was saddened that the last village board, when they made this decision to change over our system, didn't ask any questions of the expertise of the public access committee or the public access coordinator, and decided to end the videography services. When we presented to the village board twice over the years on this same question, we had recommended as a public access committee not to make the change, but the last board did not have that information, they hadn't asked the questions. There's two parts to what the public access coordinator role is, and this position was originally put out to bid, I know there were at least four interested parties, and the role was broken into two, into two parts. One was videography services, people that you see in the room filming the meetings, but the second was the public access coordinator role, and it involved things such as filming non-governmental events that might be of public interest, taking the meetings and transferring them to the box that uploads the video for Channel 23, uploading the meetings to YouTube, it was a part of the charge, but as, as the times were gone, Facebook page was created as well for Newpalls Public Access, and so there's, there's a lot that happens beyond the actual filming of the meetings, and not through any, any bad intent, just through not having the information, I think when the decision was made to end the public access coordination services, those other functions weren't taken into consideration, and just as an example, when I went to see what quality was and what the experience was from our last village board meeting, which was done by the automated system, it's not online yet, because you don't have the KINGS work that, there's no procedure to take the video from there and, and get the video when it's done automatically to the people who can upload it to the Channel 23 and YouTube. So my concern is that what usually happens when there's extra tasks involved with government operations, those tasks fall to the office of the clerk, and I, I would not like to see that happen, because it's a lot of work, and I guess, you know, the gentleman who was president of the company that studied public access coordination for years is here, if we have any questions about what that role is, but there's a lot of stuff involved in that, I don't think it's necessarily within the expertise of the clerk's office, and I don't think it, I think it involves a lot more time than we realize. So that's, that's the issue, I want to make sure that we continue to have, if we're going to automate the videography, we need to continue to make sure the other parts of the public access coordination are covered in some way.
So this, this is my understanding of what happened, is we were paying, as a village, they were paying X number of dollars to have meetings videotaped and then distribute it, and the former administration felt that there was an opportunity to save money by, by automating the system, and unfortunately, it seems something was overlooked, and that it's not just a matter of eliminating a human cameraman, but there were other tasks that, that, that organization provided to the village, and so now, instead of a human cameraman, we have a mechanical cameraman, but now we have no one performing the distribution of this content. So it seems like the ship has sailed, we're, we're stuck with these, this mechanical cameraman, and we still have a need to distribute the content, so what I'm wondering, could we go back to the folks that we've worked with in the past and say, you guys have helped distribute our content in the past, could you give us a price for taking the, the mechanical cameraman's content distributing? It seems like that's what we're, we're left with now, and does that make sense?
There's a couple other issues involved, and one of it is, there's only one single channel 23, so there's two modulators, one in the town, the community center, and one here, and when one is live, the other one is not, and for one thing, I don't even know if you have this hooked into the modulator, so you cannot allow, so I don't know, no one ever talked about this, we wouldn't help you figure it out.
I, I'm, go ahead.
Sorry, can you just clarify, because I'm, I'm a little confused, so USIA video is hired to do two separate things, they happen to be the same business, you know, the bids were presented and accepted separately, one is the videography and one is the program coordination, and the program coordinator coordinates the shared channel, so, so the cost was split between the town and the village, so that, you know, one entity could oversee sharing the use of the channel, so I'm not sure if the decision was made to just, you know, like not fund the videography, but to continue with the program coordinator.
That may have been the intention of the past court. I think it's also important that we clarify that, that this is a new arrangement that this current court has inherited, and we're trying to understand what, what capabilities we have with this hardware that we purchased and what, what capabilities may be missing.
I think it's unfortunate that Deputy Mayor left, because she was the coordinator in this whole process, and so some of us may have been ignorant about some of the factors that were left out of consideration, but if she were here, she might be able to explain those, and this is, again, the first time we're in a discussion of this, I don't, I don't want to pretend that I know all of the factors that led to something not happening, whilst we were presented with what seemed like a very reasonable option to make something happen.
Okay, what, what I would like to do is, we will encourage Deputy Mayor Rotsler to help us understand what, what, how the decision came to be in the past, and we can discuss it over the next meeting, and it seems like we might need to reengage USIA and ask them to come up with a plan for us to, what was the phrase you used, Andrea, it was like, not the videographer, but the other piece?
Well, you know, we need a...
Public access, we need a public access coordinator, that seems like that is what was...
You need a program coordinator, and, and, you know, if you looked at your budget, they were, they were itemized too, so you might have budgeted for the program coordinator, I don't know, but...
Yeah, you have, there's two separate ones, and you divide it into the town, and set up years ago, six months, the town pays, and six months the village pays, and you're into your six months right now.
Don, do you want to help us look at what, you know, how we budgeted for this in the past? Or can you work with, with our clerk? Because I think you, you probably will, will understand what we're after, and then Katie can, can help identify the information that we need. So let's try to figure out what we've paid for in the past, what we're saving with an automated cameraman, and it'll be helpful to the next steps.
The help from USIA would be a list of what it is you do.
Have you actually seen the video of her, the sound of the noise?
I know. The sound is outstanding, the picture itself, the picture itself is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't categorize as outstanding, but at least the sound is outstanding.
Is that going live, the live sound over Channel 23 is outstanding?
We haven't tried to go live over 23.
I presume we'll find that that's very different from rebroadcasting, I believe, that's, because you're at the mercy of time lawyers.
So Katie, can you, can you put that as a, as a question?
Let's work together.
That would be great. There is a copy of the last meeting in your mailbox for your review, because you weren't here, so we just have to run you over.
Right, and I also think it's incredibly important that the, like, in addition to the meetings being live, they need to be available on YouTube or Facebook the next morning, which is, you know, I think everyone in this community has gotten used to.
Absolutely, it was, it was an unusual circumstance at the last meeting, it was not, the letter that referred to USAI, USIA, please excuse me, I'm so sorry, did not discontinue our service until September, we had anticipated having someone here, as it turns out, that person accidentally wasn't here, so we weren't prepared to use our video the next day, so that's why it's, we were still working on our bugs when we just happened to have that backup.
Okay, so we have, we have Katie and Rebecca and Don all looking at this, you're going to get back to us next meeting, okay, so let's jump to the next item, discussion.
I have a good question, I'm here for, I don't want to, I'm here for, I don't remember what happened, is there anybody that you can give me to check out?
Absolutely.
I don't, you know, I don't actually know, like, what are the next few items that we have?
We still have number eight, which is the resolution, provided by the attorney, we have a briefing by building planning to update the county-led multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation, we have a discussion on the proposed amendment, the two, obviously we would remove that, we have a discussion on the planning board's review of the...
Okay, so I know where we are, so we're going to do this resolution, and then we'll move NBR up, just so we, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
So we have a resolution here, a resolution of the village board, of the village of Newpalls supporting the application of Valentina Suarez to re-enter the United States from the country of Colombia. So the reason that our board is doing this is because Valentina and her American-born husband and American-born children are all in the, in contract and purchasing a home in the village of Newpalls, and she is, because of a complicated immigration matter in Bogota, Colombia, and the US Embassy in Colombia is not permitting her to re-enter. So I can read the final resolution, "The village board hereby supports all efforts of Valentina Suarez to regain lawful admittance to the US where she has resided with her husband and children for many years, and is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to forward certified copies of this resolution to all local, state, and federal government representatives with a written request that said representatives communicate with both the US Citizenship and Immigration Services and the US Council General of Colombia to expedite the re-entry process on behalf of Ms. Suarez." So we have a, do we want to discuss that before we do our roll call?
If you would consent.
You have to move it.
I move.
Do I have a second?
Yep, second. Aye.
Trusty Kirk.
Aye.
Trusty Rocka.
Aye.
Trusty Young.
Aye.
I'd like you to show that there were four ayes and one absent.
Okay, so we can move on.
Question.
So the next item, discussion of planning board review of proposed NBR zoning text, I'd like to give a, a quick background, this is something that the combined planning board and village board committee have been working on for a while, the previous administration worked very hard to change the intent and purpose for the B3 or the North Chestnut District, so it would be multi-story and mixed use, any new development should be multi-story and mixed use, and there was some conflicting information, the way the legislation was originally written, and we had some amazing volunteer efforts from several individuals on our planning board and village board to try to clean that up, and we worked with our planning board attorney, there is one remaining issue that needs to be sorted out, the, the map of this district has been a little bit unclear, and I personally believe that the, the previous administration had identified which properties should be included in this district, and the, the former planner at the time had identified which property should be included in this district, and I'm very comfortable not second-guessing the reasons that they used to, to identify which property should be included in the district. All we were trying to do with our review of that legislation was to eliminate the conflicting information, where we are requiring any new development to be multi-story mixed use, and that's kind of a, a quick update there, so that's going to go back to the planning board, and our, our planner, David Gilmore, is, is, is working on that, and then the next step would be for our board to review that final version and to also send that to the, to the county, like I said, so there are a few additional steps.
As well as if you're ready to set a hearing.
And, and right, so it would be our view and then our setting of a public hearing, so are we, could we set a public hearing tonight?
For the night?
Or just in the future?
Do you have a specific, a specific date and time or is that...
I, I realize that, but, but are we ready to do that while we're, while we're waiting just for the, the final review of the map by the planning board?
So you have a zoning text before you, and then there's a confirmation of zoning district footprint, that you'd like to have larger area affirmed by the planning board, so you could, it seems that you would go forward with the narrative and the footprint contingent on that confirmation and dialogue with the planning board.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing on what Mr. Gilmore just described for the night.
Now, you need 15 days for noticing a zoning public hearing, according to your local, so...
So that doesn't give us 15 days, so then we have to wait until the 16th, which would be our next meeting.
And the question becomes to, does the clerk's staff have the mechanical capacity to notice with 15 days? Are we able to hit the 16th of September?
Not with using the local newspaper, we could have used the Kingston Freeman, which is the alternate paper as per the reorder, but at this date, if we gave the information in time for the next publication, it would be the 13th, the 3rd of September, and with public hearing on the 16th.
That's fine, so I don't mind using the Freeman, that's exactly why we, we have that arrangement.
We can absolutely meet that then.
Okay, so we have a motion, Don seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a public hearing set.
Thank you.
Next issue is a briefing by planner David Gilmore on the county-led multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Do you want, you have a question?
I don't mind. Yeah. Thank you for saying that publicly. I guess the question I have relates to the footprint. As you just said, the, the prior administration had created the overlay of the zoning district of the properties in the village that resided, that resided in the quarter. Some of whom were in the R-two district. The others were in the B-three. But the ones that were in the R-two, the original intent was to create, you know, R-two because you have a major arterial there to have retail and housing on, both the R-two and then into the B-three. It was your intent, I guess, on asking to leave that be?
I, I'm sorry if it wasn't clear, because I, I feel the previous administration, the previous planner, had identified the, the properties, both in the, the R-two and the B-three. So I'm not, I'm not interested in second-guessing the work that they did. I'm uncomfortable with the, the properties that they identified to be in this new district, which we're now calling NBR. Okay?
Thank you very much.
So David Gilmore has the floor.
Thank you. The village planner, David Gilmore, and a task assigned, the building inspector was being representative for the village of New Paltz within the process of updating the Ulster County Hazard Mitigation Plan. In two thousand nine, Ulster County received funding from FEMA and New York State Emergency Management to develop an all-hazard plan. Essentially, there's a number of, there's a variety of types of hazards that a community can be exposed to, but which you can mitigate. You can take some action proactively to try to prevent the adverse impacts of natural or human disasters. For example, we here in New York, many of us, of course, are aware of the Hurricane Irene and Lee incident, Superstorm Cindy, right? Which was in a sense a flood disaster and a significant rain event, a tropical storm. Wind hazards, flood hazards, forest fires, there's a variety of different types of hazards, all of which are, most of which, especially natural hazards, are addressed within the two thousand nine hazard plan. Fast forward five years later, Ulster County again is developing a multi-jurisdictional. It's not just Ulster County, it's Ulster County and participating municipalities. So I'm making the village board aware that I've been working with the building inspector to formulate project worksheets, which we're submitting to Ulster County. It's led by the Department of, um, Ulster County, Department of Emergency Management, I guess. I should know that group in Ulster County, I can look that up if I know, I'm sorry I don't have that. So in essence, with the New York Rising framework, where there was federal and state resources allocated to plan, for example, flood resilience in the wake of the major storm disaster, one of the things that building and planning have done is submitted worksheets mimicking the variety of projects around flood resiliency in the, um, in the New York Rising Community Reconstruction Plan for Ulster County. There's, I think, approximately seven projects that we've developed based on that document. So I'm updating the board that we've submitted worksheets for flood resiliency. There's also been some worksheet, one of them was, in our region, generally speaking, I'm characterizing that we have some earthquake risk. And so we have developed a worksheet for possibility of a dam failing based on earthquake or other natural event, natural hazard event, such as severe rainstorm and possibility of liquefaction or of dam or surcharge of a, of a dam or impoundment. And then we're also programming recommendations for how we'll continue besides tonight briefing you on this hazard plan, but building, supported by planning, will continue to participate in this process, which will be through Ulster County. So there were tear bills in your packet, and I'm briefing you that we've been identifying projects and we're bringing them to Ulster County.
Great, thanks. Any, any questions?
I just wanted to know what the responsibility that we, I mean, for example, we, you and I very recently did some training on emergency preparedness. Is there a link between emergency preparedness training and multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plans?
It's an excellent question. And clearly, the, the hazard plan presents various probabilities and types of hazards that can happen, including ways, especially that a hazard mitigation plan presents ways that we can qualify for funding, hopefully, through the hazard plan and then try to proactively set up our best ways to avoid the worst effects if there is a natural hazard or another hazard event. A local emergency planning process, where you're working on the process of having chains of command and methods of communication and response during a hazard event, they fit together. They fit together like, one's a, one's a social process and a method of response. And in a sense, the hazard planning is also sort of the physical and social planning that you're setting up beforehand, so that if there's an event like a forest fire in the west, hopefully, we're minimizing the event. And I might as well also make sure to emphasize, since I didn't put it on the agenda, I spoke to your village board last week, we also have, excuse me, two weeks ago, we also have the upcoming community meeting on flood hazard resilience in conjunction with the US EPA Technical Assistance Project for flood hazard resilience. And that'll be on Thursday evening, I think, it's, it's the Thursday evening, September seventeen. That'll be at seven PM, and tentatively it's here unless I find a little bit bigger room based on an anticipated larger response. So please, I'm always invited and encouraged in that.
So as these hazards are identified, they'll be communicated to the village board?
So.
I remember seeing a list that scared me recently, so I.
So. I encourage members of the community and your planner and building department are prepared to verse you in the two thousand nine hazard plan. It looks at things like, as I said, tornado, wildfire, flood, these various potential hazards. Now that data is, all that companion of data and risk assessment that's in that, and that the hazard plan is being reformulated, but then also the communities are participating, helping locally identify needs and interests. And hopefully, therefore, not only setting up resiliency and mitigation, but also qualifying for leverage, excuse me, leverage federal assistance to do things like help flood-proof buildings or help reinforce facilities like our wastewater treatment plant. So in the event of flood, we've got high walls, the wastewater treatment plant doesn't get inundated by water, continue to operate. Also maybe because it has electric generators within those impoundments and above that. So trying to minimize the potential of that. And so with the, presumably, we are asking some questions of the county to, to confirm process and timeline. It's a fairly rapid timeframe. It's important that we're participating as a municipality, including communicating with the public about opportunities for input as well as ways that they can learn about the plan. But if, for example, there are further opportunities for public input and feedback, we'll, we'll keep you briefed as best we can.
There is a document I can refer to there.
So, so there's the two thousand nine existing hazard plan. At this stage, we're identifying local needs and interests. And presumably, and that's just, there will be another plan coming out, the update of that plan. I just don't know some of the interim process.
Okay.
And I wasn't directly involved in some of that.
No problem, thanks.
Okay, the next item I have, and then tell me if I'm wrong, Katie, is the discussion of whether the village will donate to the construction of a community nine-eleven memorial.
That is the first item under the old business. However, under new business, we still have the discussion about the fee scheduling. The information provided by Andrea Russo.
Okay, one, let's see, one item. So fee scheduling. We have a new building inspector who's doing a very good job of taking a look at our fee schedule and making sure that, that fees are being collected. He identified a fee that had not been collected. So the way it works is we have rental properties in this village are inspected annually. So depending on the size of the property, there is a different fee. Our new building inspector identified an additional fee that is referred to in our code, and it was a dollar amount per tenant in each building. I, I spoke with our building inspector and we spoke with our attorney about this fee. And then, and the fee schedule that our board had adopted actually set that fee at one hundred dollars per tenant. I generally have a great deal of trouble charging fees based on tenants. So for instance, if you had a rental property with four units in it, you could have one tenant per unit, or you could have a couple in each unit. So you could have four people in your four-unit building, or eight people in your four-unit building. So this fee would then be four hundred dollars or eight hundred dollars. And.
And if you have babies?
Right. Right, there's no age restriction, so the baby, you know, so the baby would also cost. And, and I'm a huge proponent of setting our building department up for success. I want them to be able to clearly identify what fees are due, clearly explain to property owners what, what fees is expected of them. We need to make sure that, that the process makes sense. And I also feel like the way it is structured with this fee that our new building inspector identified, we're in essence double-dipping. So we're already charging per unit, a fee per unit, and now we're also charging for tenants. So one of the things that the, the previous administration did, which is very valuable and an important move in the right direction in terms of better process, they removed dollar amounts in the code and put them on a separate fee schedule. So there's, there's, that's, that's valuable for several reasons, because it allows our board to look at that fee schedule and, and compare fees to each other. There's one centralized location to understand how much we're collecting for a variety of, of, of issues. The other advantage is that if we need to change a fee, we're not creating new legislation. So in this instance, I think for a few of the reasons that I've, that I've identified, I would like to continue to, to charge rental properties a, a fee based on their number of units. But I would like to remove this fee where we're charging owners of rental properties a per-tenant fee. And, and the way I believe we should do that, because now that we have this mechanism of a separate fee structure, is we just move that fee from one hundred dollars per tenant to zero dollars per tenant. And I think in additional detail, that, that it's important to, to highlight here, is even though this was in the code, it was not being collected. So all we're doing is just fixing the, the fee schedule so it's more clear to property owners, so it's more clear for, for building department officials.
So we made mention the process that we currently have in place.
Right. And that's, and that's not to say, I also have an interest in actually changing how we, we levy fees. I, I'm not a fan of per-unit fees. I think that fees should probably be charged based on square footage. That would also work in the direction of making the process more clear for property owners, making the process more clear for our building department officials and code enforcement folks. But that we will discuss at a later date after we, after we research that topic and, and see what is the fairest rate on a per, per square foot basis, whether it's a commercial property or a residential property. But for tonight, I would just like to.
I was just going to make a motion. There might be more discussion.
You go ahead, though. You have any more discussion?
Before you make the motion, if anybody on this board would be charged those fees, should they be sitting up this vote?
I, I am, I am charged, because I have a rental property in the village, so I am charged annual inspection fees. So I could volunteer to recuse myself. But I, I feel like the way most choices to recuse oneself is if you feel like there's a, a financial bias. I don't feel like I have any financial bias at all in terms of making decisions.
It's not, I would be charged this in the first place anyway, so it's not like you're saving any money, I just, in that, as far as being process-oriented.
No, I, I like, I like the idea of, you know, being extra transparent in terms of disclosures and, and, you know, there's, there's an ethics board in the town where it's required that anyone serving on a, on an elected board or a, an appointed board, you have to disclose anything that you own in New Paltz. And I have no problem saying that I have a rental property and I have to, or I'm, I'm part owner of a, of a small rental property with four units. And I, and it's, I'm required to pay into that annual inspection.
But as I say, I think the most important factor here, from my point of view, and I don't own anything except my own little home across the street, is that this is, we're, we're voting to retain the current practice. We're, we're voting to make no change, because there happened to be an item in the code that hadn't been addressed when we were addressing all of the other fees. So whether you recuse yourself or not, I'm prepared to say we should continue doing what we've been doing.
So along those lines, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the currently uncollected per-tenant fee to from one hundred dollars to zero. Seems like the American version of the Chinese one-child policy, you have a child.
A hundred bucks to the village, you know?
So I'm, I'm gonna, I, I feel like, you know, we're going to have to make several decisions along these lines. I don't think it, it, it really makes sense for me to recuse myself in this vote, because this is what I was elected to do.
There's a financial conflict, isn't there?
Well, there is a, there is a, there is a potential financial conflict. But I, I feel like if I'm disclosing that there could be a, a potential conflict, you know, that's, that's the most important thing.
There's a big difference between an actual and a potential conflict, so.
So appreciate the way you, you handled it.
So we have a motion on the table?
Yes.
A second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we have adjusted that fee schedule. I'm sorry, Katie, so you, just give me, give me one at a time, right, or?
Sure. Now you, now you would like to accept the resignation with regard for Andrea Russo?
Absolutely. So Andrea, thank you for your service as the EPC secretary. I know everyone, you know, we saw a thread of emails with the people who were on the EPC who were incredibly thankful of, of your contribution, so thanks very much.
Here, here.
I would just observe as past chair that Andrea was more, more than a secretary and really, you know, and, uh, um, really, you know, like a, a really contributing member of the, of the group, and I don't think we could have accomplished, all the money needs to be accomplished without her being there, and, uh, oh, yeah, thank you.
Next, we have- Um, in your email about that, you discussed a replacement, but you also have added to the table a planning and zoning. I don't know if you, a planning and zoning secretary, I don't know if you hope that the planning, the planning and zoning secretary might take that on, or the clerk's office can take that on?
Right, um-
I'm just going to find out.
It seems like, absolutely. So, it, it, it seems like the, uh, the direction that we are headed in, um, in terms of having, um, someone help with the secretary responsibilities of the EPC, we'd be using individuals from the clerk's office. So, that's, that's where we're headed at this moment. Additionally, we'll be announcing publicly that the, the village will be looking to hire a new planning and zoning secretary. It's the same job description that, um, was hired for in the past.
Do you want a motion to advertise for that position?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we advertise or publicly announce that we're looking for a, a new planning and zoning secretary. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, what was next under new business? Katie, did you have something?
The volunteer, uh, uh, volunteer, who's going to be SUNY.
Right, so I, I'm, I, I would like to make a motion that we, we, um, so, work with the EPC, work with village staff to make sure that we have a, a table at the volunteer fair at SUNY on nine eleven. I think there may be a, some cost, but, uh, the representative said, from SUNY also said that they would, would work with us as well, but I think that's a, that's a worthwhile thing. The, uh, the current EPC chair said that, um, researchers are very valuable to that commission. So, all in favor of moving forward with making sure that we have a table presence at the volunteer fair?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last item under new business is the comments from trustee Kerr regarding the building committee?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, I've been asking, uh, over and over again during this process, uh, for the written documentation, the, uh, anything in writing that would, you know, that would shed some light on, on decisions that were taken. And I did receive, and I think it's in this copy, but the, the board hasn't seen, um, some information from, there was a, uh, I guess it was in two thousand and seven, um, when the town was looking at relocated the police department, uh, there was a committee, uh, formed, had a bunch of meetings over a, over a long period of time, and came up with some recommendations. That committee was comprised of three of the same five, three of the members of the current building committee looking at, uh, municipal building were also members, and the two chairs were the same in this earlier, uh, earlier, uh, process. And I, I, we talked about this last meeting until you weren't here. I've been struck by, um, some of the presentations we've had from the village board have stressed looking at the current Veterans Drive site, where the current town hall is, and also looking at the village site. And I kind of had come to this last meeting expecting to look into the village site and talk about that a bit, you know?
Which last meeting, which last meeting?
Our last, village board meeting.
Okay.
You were away.
Yeah.
But before that meeting, when I went to the building committee meeting, they once again shut me down and said, you know, this village site is not an option. It's got to be Veterans Drive and the current town hall site, um, or nothing. And I, um, I, when we have our, our, uh, joint meeting to discuss this, I, I don't feel like I'd be surprised that I'm going to revisit the issue of also considering the, uh, even the current village hall site or the pit. Just two pages from a PowerPoint that were given by the previous committee, three-fifths of the members are the same as the current one. Um, the guidelines included that the facilities be as close as possible to the center of the town and have full possible access to municipal sewer and water. Um, and they actually recommended a specific site, um, after their months of, of, of meetings and discussions, and that site happened to be the pit. Um, we just heard a proposal today, uh, normally used to the pit. But I, I would just restate my personal feeling that it's really the ideal location for a municipal hall, town, village, uh, police courts would be in the center of the community. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that a community, a, a committee, after months of effort, did come to the same conclusion, so, uh, I just don't feel like I'd be surprised that I bring that up again. Um, it may please everyone to hear it, but just wanted to give you all a heads up.
Anything else, or any other comments? I, I, I don't mind reiterating, um, why I'm very much in favor of a combined municipal center at the Veterans Drive site. I, I feel like from a fiduciary responsibility point of view, this is a valuable piece of property, the pit is a valuable piece of property. I would prefer to see, um, ratables on properties like this in the core of our community, and, um, I feel like the Veterans Drive site is certainly not as close to the cornerstone, B and G's, uh, you know, that intersection of, of Platteville and Main Street as, as, you know, the difference between this location and the Veterans Drive location, but to me it's still close to the, to the village's core. And, you know, the idea of building something in the pit, where would that money come from? The other, the other reason that I like the Veterans Drive site is because it's, we currently own it, both village and town taxpayers. It's an awkward property, it's a, it's a rectangle, um, it has a right of way through it to access the residential, um, neighborhood in the back. So, if you were to build something here, you're, you're, you're not taking advantage of the fact that these are valuable pieces of property that could generate more tax revenue, and then you would be selling a, an awkward piece of property at Veterans Drive. Um, I think you really have to look at things in aggregate, you know, what is in the best interest of, of the taxpayers? That's kind of my take on the, the difference between the sites and why you would consider the Veterans Drive site over our current village hall site or the pit. And I think if we were to sell this property, I believe it would be, um, a, a great idea to make it conditional on whatever is developed here, that includes X number of municipal spots, um, that X amount of the space continues to be open and, and park-like, I think, um, that would be a, a great way to, to serve and enhance our community. Wherever you could turn this property into something that is generating tax revenue, but then continues to provide, provide open space.
And I think there's so, two, two responses, I, because I, I, you know, you made that opinion clear a couple times, so I've, I've, I've thought about it. And I, just before I left the school board, just before you joined, we had what I thought was pretty empty idea to purchase the property at Bylet Bay, where there is currently historic home there. And because of the various laws, uh, the current property owner would not be able to subdivide that property and separate the home and the acreage behind it. And the plan for the school district was looking at this from a fiduciary standpoint and as a real estate thing. If the school district could buy the whole parcel and separate it to sell the house, and the case we made to the community, we could make some serious real estate money on this, which can finance things for the school district and also pick up the property. And the feedback, I think, that I got personally and that the Board of Education got is that, um, boards and commissions should not be in the real estate business. You know, I, I understand you see some, some value in this property, but I don't think we should be looking at, at this question from a, a profit and loss standpoint. But if we were, uh, the sale of this property could potentially finance the purchase of the pit. Now, the other point that I, I would make is I have a different view of Veterans Drive site. I think a, um, a mixed-use project there would be ideal because of the access to the pool. I think people would want to, would want to move into residential space that had access to the pool, and I think that property could actually be a, a, um, a cornerstone of that new district. I think a project that we heard about in the pit would be, would be great in that location for the same reason that I personally don't think it'd be great with the pit. So, we'll, we'll, we'll debate it, so we'll, you know?
Sounds good.
And, uh-
Okay, uh, next topic.
Now, you've moved on to the old business number fourteen, discussion of the village who wants to donate, buy and do all the construction of the three nine-one-one memorial.
Right, and we received an, an opinion from planning board attorney, um, and he explained to us that his research indicates that the village cannot donate taxpayer funds to a fire company or veterans organization for a monument or a veterans memorial according to New York State comptroller's opinion. So, something we can do there?
Well, there is something we could do. I think the, the thing is that we could purchase something and donate to something we purchased. If we were to purchase, say, you know, a component that was envisioned for that location, we could purchase it in the village and donate the property, while we can't donate, uh, we can't donate money. So, when I read that, and I saw that there is a way to go there, we just need, we'd need to find out from the planners of that memorial, what you have envisioned for that location that, that might cost around five hundred dollars, and we, the village could purchase that, donate the property.
Does someone want to look into that, explore what Don's suggesting?
I will. I'll find out from the planners-
Right, and if somebody may ask, uh, Will Frank, this is a, you know, explicit step that we can take.
Sure.
Can we take this?
Okay, so let's put that on the next meet, uh, for the next agenda, and Don's going to report back to us. Is there another way that we can contribute, and, um, does the project actually have something that we could buy if we are indeed allowed to contribute?
One other follow-up question, maybe, if we, whether or not we can contribute to a physical item if we're allowed to help fundraise, even if we're not physically giving the money, or we're allowed to help raise the money?
No.
Yeah.
No, I, this is, I know that this has come up, but at a different time, the village cannot help fundraise.
Okay. So, old business, are we moving on to?
Number fifteen discussion.
Number fifteen?
We don't have anything new to add on this.
Nothing news?
Well, let's go and say something new to it.
Well, Tom and I discussed this, and really, it was a very token gesture for new businesses, and the conclusion I came to, and I believe Tom came to as well, was that we were more likely to upset existing business owners than really offering anything substantial to new businesses coming in. And we're, we're both very much in support of doing what we can for new businesses coming in. This is such a token gesture that it's probably not worth pursuing, because we're just going to upset what we already have.
So, we're going to table this indefinitely?
Or kill it.
Yeah, I wouldn't say kill it, but it's kind of misleading. Yeah, I mean, if we didn't want to do this at the last meeting while you were in Peru, this was something that you brought up, and we figured we, you know, we'll go along with it.
I love this, really, you guys. Um, okay, so it's done. So, uh, then the, the final item, the, there's just one remaining item, correct?
Discussion of apartment of the Avenue, Hasbrook Avenue and new signs.
Did you guys discuss this at the last meeting? Because for, for me, this, this is a simple fix, and it's something that we need to do, because-
Good, I think we did discuss it, really. And I was in conversation with Blue about moving, well, let's see, let's see if I can recall, um, what we, what we came to here. He said that we had just deferred for a time, uh, changing some of the signs, and that they were on a schedule to be changed.
That's not my understanding of, of what's going on.
That's not your understanding?
No. This is, this is, this is what I see. We have metered parking around Hasbrook, and the, the meters, however much it costs, the meters are in effect from nine to six P M., Monday through Saturday. So, you can park in any metered spot on Sundays, right? That's, is that your take as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then, we have sections of Elting and Hasbrook with-
Two, uh-
Two other types of sign. No, well, Hasbrook, I, I went and took pictures of these signs this afternoon. So, Hasbrook has a sign, it has two signs next to each other that conflict with, with each other. One sign says, no parking from eight A M. to seven P M. except Saturday, Sunday and holidays. And then the other sign said that there's no parking except Saturday and Sunday holidays. So, one part of Hasbrook, you can overnight park, and the other part of Hasbrook, you cannot. And what I think we need to do, and this would also fix that, the, the Elting Ave-
The church.
Parking spots and the Hasbrook parts, is that everything in that whole area over there, everything around the park, whether it's a two-hour parking spot or a metered parking spot, you can park overnight anywhere, but you, you cannot, you cannot park there, or you could, the parking rules are only in effect Monday through Saturday, nine A M. to six P M. Because as it stands now, you can't park there starting at, at nine to midnight. And tha- that's the way the sign reads, and it's not being enforced. Like, I, I want to see uniformity everywhere, so everywhere you go, you know what to expect, so it's not confusing to residents.
There's, were the conflicting signs there all this time, or were there new signs put up?
Both.
To, uh, rectify a situation that we were requiring, but have now again created a conflict?
It's both, because the, the, the north side of Hasbrook has two conflicting signs, and all of the signs on Elting conflict with the metered spots around the park.
And are the signs then reflective of the, uh, decisions made by this board, or are they confusing because someone was confused?
I'm confused by that.
Exactly.
Well, someone might have thought we wanted to do something, whether having that new signs, put the new signs in next to the old signs, thereby creating more confusion when we did not demand or require it.
We basically have four different types of parking rules around that park, four different types of rules. I want two types of rules, one that's metered and one that's two-hour. But they all, they're all, it's very simple to fix.
Can you, Blue, just walk around block and decide?
If you want to give me, if you want to give me, uh, authorization to go fix this, I can do it, I know exactly what we need to do.
I authorize the mayor to fix this situation.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Go ahead, Katie.
But rule, rule loss-
You may have to, you may have to pass legislation in order to, to iron some of this out.
Well, at least Blue and I can come up with a plan.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just-
Well, I mean, if we take the signs out of the screwdriver, tell us we need to do it, we'll, we'll-
All right, I'll take the sign project on.
That's why I want to find, you know, did we in fact do something that, did we pass legislation that confused this issue, or did we pass legislation that we wanted to clarify the issue, and then the, the clarification was misconstrued?
No, the former board made it more confusing. Okay, um, with that, that two-hour for the rest of, for twenty-four hours a day, it's two, that, I mean, that's how that Elting Avenue signs read, two-hour parking for twenty-four hours a day. That's not the way they should do it.
And if we were to be a church-going person who got there early for Sunday at school and stayed out of service, that would have to take more than two hours.
You would technically be in violation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't want to, unless you want to go to church.
And those very same points were brought up at this very same table in discussion.
So, we have a plan, I think. We got a plan.
We'll get there.
Um, one other, I forgot to add this to, so we have nothing left on the agenda, correct? I, I wanted to add one other thing, just a, an, an update, um, so I guess I'm doing this now, another discussion?
Well, it's an announcement, you can make an announcement.
It's an announcement, yeah, because it's, it's not requiring any action. Um- It's an announcement, yeah, because it's, it's not requiring any action. I don't know if any, if anyone else has noticed this, but several weeks ago, there was a water leak on two oh eight headed south at the corner of two oh eight and Main. And when I noticed it, I called Blue, and in, in typical Blue fashion, he already knew about it, and they had a, a plan to, to deal with it. And there was a, a half a day where traffic was closed and they opened up the road, and Blue reported back to me that they, they felt they, they found a problem, because this is, this is a lot of aging infrastructure. So they found some infrastructure that was failing. They, they put that in, they closed up the hole, and then it kept leaking. So I spoke about it with Blue again, and he's like, yeah, we're, we're really confused right now, what's going on. We're going to continue to monitor it and try to figure out what the problem is. So I'm happy to report that they, they now have a, a game plan and they have ordered parts to, to fix what they, they believe is the, you know, that will help this, this problem and, and sort it out once and for all. So it's, it's a trial and error thing. They, they fixed one problem and it seemed like they have now identified another problem and, you know, they're, they're on it. So that leaky water situation at that corner will hopefully be resolved soon.
And I go to, I'm a member of the Water, Wastewater Equipment Manufacturing Association, and our meeting's twice a year. This issue of aging infrastructure is not limited to New Pauls, it's nationwide, and it's, you know, it's a ticking time bomb. Our, our DPW seems to be particularly good and on top of the situation, looking to settle or something this out, but this is a, you know, this is a, a big, big issue nationwide.
I, I can share, you know, because as a, as a new, a new mayor, I'm learning how this works, and it's interesting when the, when a, a problem is identified, what they, what they generally do is they go, our DPW goes in and fixes it immediately with the, the parts that they have on hand, because often there are specialty parts that need to be ordered. So what they try to do is, is deal with it right away and, and get the street back online so as not to disrupt traffic. So they're very mindful of, of A, trying to sort something out right away, and B, making sure it's as, as least disruptive as possible. And then they wait for the new part to come in and then go in and, and fix it. So, you know, they're, they're very mindful of...
Seeing what's been done on Platteville, where they'd open up the road, dig it up and have it closed by the evening, every day, which is a really impressive job.
So. All right, that's all I had. That was just kind of an, an update for all of us in the public.
Move that way to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
This is the article I was requesting.
It's not a report, it was too much.
About what then matters?
Yeah.
What can we do to better a service in this area?
In where?
In the core buildings here.